What? Four.
January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, seven o'clock, we're called Hangar Meeting Board, first Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to republie which stands: Norition, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, before we get started, this is Tony Springer on Zoom call.
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, Tony, could you just give us your exact location?
Uh, yes, ten Gray Avenue, Greenwich, New York.
Ten Gray?
Yes, G R A Y.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, first on our agenda is a two lot subdivision.
I want to do a roll call.
Oh, hang on one second.
I'm gonna do a roll call. John Kurski.
There.
Dane Morton.
Here.
Barbara Conway.
Here.
Tony Springer.
Here.
Kyle is absent. Josh is absent. Hey, go ahead.
Okay, first on our agenda is two lots of division. Owen, Michael, and Stacy Ruble. Agent is Dara Land survey. Is the agent on Zoom?
Yeah, this is Kristen Dara.
Okay. So this looks like a minor subdivision, one lot. We're going to, uh, propose lot. I had any information for you?
Well, Kristen, do you want to explain why they're subdividing this?
Mr. and Mrs. Ruble are interested in selling off a minimum-sized lot, which would include the the house on the property, and retaining the remaining lands. Their primary residence is in Corinth. This is, I'm assuming, you know, additional property that they own, and they aren't interested in retaining the house anymore. So, but they do want to keep the rest of the properties. They, we created a lot that meets all the dimensional and area requirements for the zoning in that area to be able to split off a lot so they can put it on the market.
Karen, it meets all the requirements for the subdivision.
Yes, it's in the RT zone, which is town residential town. One acre is required. I think two hundred feet minimum with, and they meet all, they meet all of that. This is not in the Adirondack Park, so they didn't have to do, they didn't have to check for jurisdictional authority with the Adirondack Park Agency, and there's a short form seeker in the file, and no county reference was required.
Obviously, no wetlands.
None shown, and that's, um, there was none shown on the computer, what we have mapped that I looked at.
Okay, any of the board members have a question, any question?
The one border of this property is a stream, so there may be some wetlands there, but it's incorporated in that biggest lot that they're filming out of this.
Should, should that make any differences?
No, they just can't build on what we have.
But the wetlands aren't on the proposed lot.
And there's no right of ways for the power lines or nothing like that that we have to be concerned about?
National Niagara Mohawk owns a right-of-way behind this parcel, and it's not part of the parcel, so no.
So do we have to make a motion to approve the seeker, or can we just approve the subdivision, Karen?
I think I'm having to read the seeker into the record, so before we do that. So the name of the applicant is Michael Stacy Ruble. And question number one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule, regulation? No. Does the proposed action require a permit, approval of funding from any other government agency? No. And the acreage is listed at number, under number three, and it's going to be less than an acre, correct, Karen?
Correct. So it's gonna be disturbed, less than an acre, so.
Physically disturbed, correct. Check all land uses that occur on or join or near the proposed action. Forest and rural non-agriculture. And the five is a proposed action, a permitted use under the zoning regulations, yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Is the proposed action consistent with predominant character of the existing built natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near site proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? No. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? Yes. So that is the town water?
Um, it's existing private.
Okay, existing well, no construction.
She's written that in there.
Gotcha. Will the proposed actually connect to an existing wastewater utilities? Yes, they're gonna use the existing, connects to an existing subject. No construction will be proposed for lot number two at this time. Number twelve, does the site, project site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on a naturals, national or state register of historic places? But that has been term, determined by the commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places? No. Is the project site, or any portion of it, located in or adjacent to any area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office? No. Does a portion of the, the site of the proposed action, any portion of the site, or lands to join the proposed action contain wetlands, or other bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? No. Would it propose action physically alter or encroach into an existing wetland and water body? No. We're fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Check all that apply, which we just have forest check. As the site, number fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Sixteen is the project, project site located in a one-hundred-year flood plain? No. Seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? No. Eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that will result in impoundment of water or other liquids? No. Nineteen, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been a location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Number twenty, has the site of proposed action or an adjoining property been a subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. Next page. Will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use of planning, land use plan or zoning regulations? Check, no on that. Will the proposed action result in a change in use of intensity of the land? Intensity, use of land, no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass, mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private waste treatment utilities?
It's not gonna, it's not going to increase.
Not impacted, right?
At all.
Okay. And will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resource, such as wetlands, water body, groundwater, air quality, or, I don't know? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problem? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources of human health? No. And at the bottom of our seeker sheet, you have two choices. The box I'm checking is, determine based on the information announced above, any supporting documentation that the proposed action cannot resolve with any significant adverse environmental impacts? See who's on now. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So any further questions or comments? Tony?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, so I'll go through each of these. I make a motion that we accept the sketch plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay.
Uh, secret determination. We did the short form. Make a motion, we accept the secret determination.
Second. I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
I. I make a motion, we accept the preliminary plat.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Number four is the APA, it's just not an Adirondack Park, we don't need a motion for that. As far as public hearing, I, unless there's some disagreement, I don't see any need for a public hearing. I make a motion that you do not need a public hearing.
A second? All in favor?
I.
I.
And I make a motion, we approve the final plat.
Second? All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay.
Okay. So we are, that's it.
Kristen, we're all set. We'll just need the, the Mylar and one, at least one paper copy for my office, okay?
I'll get those printed and over to you before the end of the week.
All right, there will be that fifty-dollar fee with that as well.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, agenda is the approval of thirty minutes, which are.
We don't have any more, so.
And any older new business, somebody would like to wrap up?
Uh, no.
Sure.
Yeah, I brought it out, we brought up before, you know, about the, uh, but I think it's in the books, as far as, uh, putting stuff out in front of your house, that whole thing, for a period of time, and so I think, Karen.
Yeah, we've, just wondering where that is. Yeah, I'm wondering where that is too. Um, when I have, I have the paperwork. The previous town attorney had done the local law to adopt that, but he had used the wrong previous local law, so it was invalid. So then it, it never got brought back, and it was then, um, that was not the previous, it's the attorney before that one, and then the, the previous attorney, attorney Mitchell, was wanting to bring that up when we redid the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. So I'm assuming that if they continue to work on that, and the board is, has said that they want to continue with the comprehensive plan. We did not get the grant for the comprehensive plan was, was the issue, but they still want to go ahead with it. So I'm hoping that when that happens, we will be redoing this ordinance, and we will address it at that point.
So, um, um, we didn't get the grant to do a current comprehensive.
Right, they did not get the grant, but the town still wants to move forward with doing it, so. Um, I'm not sure where that is at right now, but at the last town board meeting, they talked about moving forward with it anyway.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's really all I had.
I do have a question, you said, remember. Um, does the town have any authority over buildings that are in like disrepair or things like that?
A little bit, we do have, um, we have a, there's a local law that deals with properties that have like junk and stuff by them, and I have just found out that back in ninety-four, there was another local law that the town, not the zoning office, but the town, it can have a building declared uninhabitable, they can take action on it. But the county enforces the New York State Building Code law, and in that is a property maintenance law, which deals with, um, properties that are in bad repair or have a lot of junk, or of course, you know, we have stuff in our ordinance about too many cars, unlicensed, unregistered cars, you're only supposed to be allowed to have one for a period of six months. And, um, but the county has the state one, which supersedes ours, really. Um, and we can go to the county for action if we need to. I act on complaints that I get, I don't go around looking for them, because I just don't have time, I'm working twenty hours a week. But they are talking about hiring a part-time deputy person to help with the enforcement. Maybe some of that will get taken care of at that time, but if I get a complaint, and I am only accepting complaints in writing, because I get too many neighbor disputes, and I, and so I want to make sure that they're willing to stand behind their complaint, and I will act on a complaint if I get it in writing.
Okay, structural things would go to the county?
Pretty much, yes. That's, that's what I've been doing. The county, without throwing them under the bus, but throwing them under the bus, um, a lot of times will say, well, what about the rest of the places in town? Why are you just bringing up one particular place? But if they have to, they have to act on it. If they get a complaint, they have to act on it.
So that complaints for buildings like that would go to you, and then you would take it to the county?
Yep. Or you could go to the county with it yourself even, but, but yeah.
I know in the past, I think, um, um, so I've heard, um, that, uh, like certain places where there is just a lot of fair, a lot of junk outside the house and all of that, and, um, I think complaints were brought against those folks for all that, and, and again, I think in the past, so I've heard that the, the town, our town, um, you know, addressed that with the residents, and, um, suggested, suggested, politely to clean it, all it up, clean it all up and take to the dump, whatever, just clean up the property. And if they didn't do it, that it would be done for them and put on their tax bill.
That is, I, again, I just recently found out that there's this local law from nineteen eighty-four for buildings that are structurally bad, where they, that gives the town the right to do that, to have it taken down, or um, the town can take it down and put the cost of it against their property. Not for junk around, but for buildings that are structurally bad and not being taken care of.
Do we have anything for junk?
No, not that I am aware of.
I think that falls under the, um, property maintenance code, I think it's a subsection of that where, um, if you have things like even grass that's growing right too high, um, and other types of, um, uh, you know, either.
Garbage that will attract rodents or.
That, I think, is all addressable through the property maintenance code, part of the, the standard, your fire, health, and whatever, hit the name of it, but that, all I can get is wrapped in. So there is a way that it can be addressed, just like what you're discussing, but I think that the mechanism is through the county.
Okay.
But it certainly does exist.
Good to know.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony, do you have anything?
Yeah, Karen, I wanted to know, um, did we get any updates on how the town is planning on going ahead with possibly enforcing permits and people who are not applying for permits properly?
Well, um, right now, we've got a couple of them that we're working on, um, that I'm trying to get people to get permits for. We've got one in a variance hearing right now for someone who's put up a couple of sheds, so I act on those. If I find those, I act on those. Um, if someone's built something without permits, I, I notify the people, and we get it taken care of. But again, the, the town.
Well, no, how we're trying to, um, how they had suggested possibly finding people, and as a planning board, we did not want people find until they can be educated properly. Has that gone anywhere?
Yeah, I had given you a report on how that ended, basically, based on your recommendation from the planning board, um, and from what I was hearing is from the zoning board, we just, they are not moving forward with finding people or anything like that. What we're going to do are get signs made up to put at the entrances and to the town on the highway, that it's a zone community and permits are required, and we're going to leave that for a year to give people time to acclimate to that, to the notice, the actual visual notice that it's out there. We're going to end up putting it on our website, and, um, the permits are required. And then after a year, we're going to revisit it and talk about penalties at that point, but we're not moving forward with penalties at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was accepted by the town board, that that's what we recommended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen, do you have anything?
The only thing that I have is, I'm gonna talk about it early, is the, and not all the members are here, but you are required to get that four hours of training every year. I think that might have come as a surprise to Dane. I don't know that you were aware of that as a new member, but every year you get four, you're supposed to get four hours of training. I will get them to you as soon as they become available to me, and all I require is if you take. And all I require is if you take four hours, and you can take it in bits and pieces, that you send me a certificate or a copy of a quiz or something from it. In the past, before COVID, there was a, um, an organization that put together a one-day conference kind of thing in Lake George, and we all went, we all tried to go to that and got, we all got our training together, if that becomes available again, I will certainly let you know. Adirondack Park Agency put together a conference up in Lake Placid where you could get, um, training as well. But again, because of COVID, they haven't held these things for the last couple of years, so what I've been doing is as I get them electronically, I send them to you, and this year a lot of you took advantage of those state webs, um, webinars that were out there for the training, and that's put out by, um, the state, so that's certainly acceptable, but as I get them, I'll try to get them to you every once in a while, I'll get an email about something coming up, but they're far and few between right now with COVID, the way it is, it's going to be a lot of electronic training.
Have you heard anything about the search little one?
Not yet, have you?
No, but I know it's usually around this time.
Yeah, no, I have not heard anything.
Yeah, Lake George used to be in October, and we were open last year, we were in Lake, but, uh, maybe this year. That it, Karen?
That's all I have.
Sorry, I thought I had something, oh, is there any, uh, anybody getting back to you about the, some of the pending? Like the last one we, it was back in November, we had a meeting about, uh, I wanted to be able to know the development, did they ever get back to you about that?
For which one?
Oh, it was like twenty.
Oh, the seventeen lot acreage. No, but I know that they're still working on it, because I feel the calls for, um, they wanted to talk about the roads with the highway superintendent, so they're still working on that seventeen lot subdivision. I did hear from the Adirondack Park Agency that it was non-jurisdictional to them, because the wetlands that are in there were less than an acre, so it was non-jurisdictional to them. Um, the other one that I've got, I've, I've got Gorman Ruggiero subdivision that we did, that was held up by APA. Uh, APA just finalized that one, so I'm thinking we may get that. I, I'm just waiting to do the sign off on that, we have, but that one was held up, um, by APA. The Tubby Tubes one that we worked on was, is being held up by APA, because there was that outstanding violation that never got taken care of, and it was, ended up being more than the new owner thought it was going to be, so I'm not, that hasn't been finalized, I received no email from APA that that's been finalized yet, so that one's still in the works. And we still have that Hazlet subdivision up off of Sherman Road that we did, that they was going to try and resolve the road issue that has not been resolved. We, um, Mr., one of the people that have an interest in it was in the town office discussing that the other day, but there's still no resolution on that one. So we have a few old ones sitting on my desk that haven't been resolved, but are valid issues.
Okay. That's it. Since that's it, I make a motion, you adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.